All right, good evening. I would like to call the April 14, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Smiley for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, of course.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, we would like to add a closed session. I believe the attorney will have a motion for that closed session towards the end of the meeting. Correct, Mr. McGurk?
That's correct, Madam Manager. I have a closed session motion which I can read toward the end of the meeting.
Sounds good. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
As revised.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our special recognitions.
Chris May, former. There we go, because I can't handle everything. Okay, you have to stand in the middle.
Yes.
The honoree has to be in the middle.
Nice.
You doing okay today?
Yes, ma'am. Doing wonderful.
Well, I bet. It is always, as city manager, a city manager, it's always a real privilege for me to be able to recognize our city staff, particularly on the occasion of their retirement. And it's that, I have that honor this evening to recognize Chris May, Lieutenant Chris May. And I'll read you a little bit about Chris May, and then we'll let Chief Sanders speak, say a few words as well. So Lieutenant Chris May began his career with the Greenville Fire Department on January the 19th of 1993. He was hired as one of 12 fire rescue trainees that began their service on the city, to the city on that day, and that group remains one of the largest academies to be hired by the department. Throughout his career, Lieutenant May has been instrumental in leading numerous departmental initiatives, to include being one of the founding members of the department's Urban Search and Rescue Team, the North Carolina Task Force Number 10. In addition, Lieutenant May was among the first on the team to obtain his swift water rescue technician certification of which Lieutenant, of which lead Lieutenant, led Lieutenant May to be sent throughout the state on numerous deployments in areas inundated by floodwater. He also served as one of the principal departmental instructors for the Safe Kids Car Seat Program, which included preparing all of our fire rescue cadets by teaching this curriculum as part of their initial training academy. While he served time throughout the department, Lieutenant May has served the majority of his career on shift three, where he was able to complete his time leading up to his retirement on April the 1st of '22. At the time, Lieutenant May has achieved over 29 years of loyal and outstanding service to our community, to Greenville. So please join me in congratulating Lieutenant May on his retirement.
Hard to top that. I just want to say it was such a pleasure, and I'm so glad that I got to come to work for the city of Greenville while you were still on shift. I think the personnel out here, it's a testament to your leadership. I think from the very beginning, you were one of the first shifts that invited me to come to dinner and talk and visit with your, with your personnel, which I took very personally and humbly that you would do that, especially with, you know, how many years of service that you had. So I think for everyone out there, the important thing is that you are an icon of what the fire service stands for, the amount of service that you gave, the extra mile that you went in order to accomplish all the things that you accomplished throughout your career. That's something that will forever be part of your history, and, you know, I couldn't be prouder to be here for your retirement.
Now, our final, our final job is to give you the city plaque that recognizes your years of service of the city, and again congratulate you and thank you for your time. Once again, please join me. Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, and we have one additional recognition. We'd like to call up Major Bowen, as well as Captain KZ Thomas. Hello, hello. Yes, yes. Again, a real privilege for me to recognize the great work of our city staff, and this is an opportunity tonight to recognize KZ Thomas, Captain KZ Thomas. KZ just completed, Captain Thomas just completed the FBI National Academy. This is a 10-week program. It's comprised of the top 1% of law enforcement leaders around the world. The curriculum is challenging, and participants are exposed to regular physical fitness, along with leadership enrichment by some of the best trainers in our profession. The Greenville Fire Department had made the National Academy a focus for many years. Current members of the command staff continue to maintain their focus in serving in the North Carolina chapter of the FBI National Academy associates at active board meetings. That will include Deputy Chief Salz, Major Ivy, Major David Bowen, Captain Rich Tendell, and Chief Holzman, who have all completed this program. We are exceptionally plowed of KZ. KZ is, Captain Thomas, is the first female from GPD to attend the academy. I'm going to say that one more time, okay? Captain Thomas is the first female from our department to have attended the academy. She was selected after an extensive background investigation vetted by the North Carolina chapter and endorsed by the Charlotte Field Office of the FBI. Again, we are so proud of Captain Thomas. We are so proud of her commitment to this department, and please join me in congratulating KZ for this accomplishment.
On behalf of Chief Mark Holzman and the Greenville Police Department, I also want to say as the most other recent graduate of the NA, we now have six NA graduates at the Greenville Police Department, and there is very few departments in the state that can boast that. So only probably some of the bigger ones like Charlotte Mecklenburg and the State Highway Patrol. So for us to have that many graduates currently active members is a great testament to our agency and also to Captain Thomas. So thank you for the opportunity, city manager, mayor, for allowing us to continue that partnership.
Great. Now, the last thing we get to do is bestow the certificate, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who have registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
First speaker is Ms. Inez Dudley. Ms. Dudley, you have three minutes if you want to approach right there. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Inez Dudley. April the 1st, April Fools, but it wasn't really an April Fools that day. I went downtown to do some banking at the Truist Bank, and there was an event taking place at one of the parking lots downtown, right across the street from the Shepherd Library, right in front of the Jarvis Church. The music that I heard blasting all over the city was so vulgar, the MF, and all kinds of language that no citizen of Greenville should even be exposed to. As I was doing my banking, I asked one of the bankers, I said, "My God, have you guys had to put up with this all day?" And they said, "Yes, all day long." It was very offensive. There were a lot of children downtown that day, and I just was so grieved, being a Christian first and foremost, and giving glory to God. I think it was offensive to the Lord. And I think as a citizen anywhere in America, we should always be concerned about our citizens, especially when you've got events with that kind of music. It was rap music with vulgarity, the kind of talk you don't want your children hearing. You don't want it in homes. You don't want to hear it anywhere. And I came today, I really kind of forgot about it, but it was God that put that on my mind to come here tonight, so that I could express as a citizen of Greenville that we should not allow that anymore ever again. And with our business people downtown, they had listened to that all day long. I didn't like it. So that's why I'm here today, just to let you guys know that there are people who don't like hearing that music blasting all over the city, especially downtown, where our businesses are, where there are people visiting Greenville to enjoy themselves because they like the city, and then they have to come and hear stuff like that. So in behalf of the citizens of Greenville, and in behalf of the Kingdom of God, I wanted you guys to know how I felt. I think there are other people that feel that way. I want to leave you with the scripture. It's in, excuse me, Proverbs, Chapter 14, verse 34, and it says this, "Righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Appreciate the feedback. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers.
Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. The city manager has strict policy against that. All right, seen none. We'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Board of the Housing Loan Committee?
Yes. You want to continue this?
Continue.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I've got one. I'd like to reappoint Dr. Robert Shaw, please.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Congratulations, Dr. Shaw.
I said aye. I meant to say aye. I didn't say it.
Six zero.
Frody and slip.
Yeah. Whenever the mayor says say nay, that's what I do.
Wow. All right, let's move on to the next board.
Moving on, next point is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I'd like to appoint Suzanne Kamis and Talique Harris.
Second.
Harris, you said?
Harris.
Okay. All right, motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Kamis. Congratulations, Mr. Harris.
Okay, next board is the Police Community Relations Committee. Just a reminder, this is a direct appointment, does not need a second or vote. Councilmember Smiley?
I'll appoint Sterling Ruffin.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Continue, please.
Okay. And finally, we have the Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Okay, I'd like to reappoint Landon Elks.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Elks.
Okay, that concludes the appointments, Mayor Connolly.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which are the public hearings. The public hearing, this is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and of the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask you for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing of the night.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing of the night is to consider an ordinance to annex Lindale East, Section 5, Phase 1, involving 16.94 acres located at the current termini of Rupert and Remington Drives. Chief Planner Shante Gooby will provide that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located, again, within the Lindale subdivision at the end of Remington, and then from the bottom, this is Rupert Drive. The subject property is located in red. The green is already in the city limits. It's located in a preferred growth area on the tiered growth map. It'll be located in voting district number four. It's in the Fork Swamp Canal watershed, which requires 25-year detention. It is just, or almost 17 acres. It's anticipated to yield 34 single-family lots with a estimated tax value of $17 million, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
Just one quick question. Did you say it's District 4?
It is.
Oh, okay.
We changed the lines.
I'm glad you're paying attention, though.
There's squirrels out there, even when you don't think I am.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. We'll close the public hearing, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number five. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number five is an ordinance requested by the Covington Group Limited to rezone 4.65 acres located between Turnberry and Smithwick Drives and east of the East Fire Tower Boulevard from general commercial to office residential high-density multifamily. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located between Turnberry Drive and Smithwick Drive. To the east is Charles Boulevard, to the west is Arlington Boulevard. So it's between the Food Line Shopping Center, and then you have Wendy's and Parker's Barbecue on the other side. This property is just a bit over four and a half acres, and it's one of the few times we're actually dealing with a perfectly square piece of property. This is the existing land use, so everything that's shown in beige is vacant. Any properties in red are commercial, and then the properties across the street in blue, those are offices. This property is located in the Fork Swamp Canal, so if stormwater is required, it would require 25-year detention. This property is within the community activity focus area, which is at the intersection of Fire Tower and Charles Boulevard. These activity centers are intended to serve about a three-mile radius with goods and services. When you're comparing the full buildout of the existing zoning versus the proposed zoning, there's actually a decrease in traffic. Property is currently zoned general commercial. Under the current zoning, the property would yield about 35,000 square feet of commercial space, so that could be retail, it could be restaurant. And then under the proposed zoning, the property could yield about 55 multifamily units. For the future land use plan, this sort of this block, if you will, between Arlington and Charles is sort of splits, not exactly down the middle, but the properties along Arlington are shown as mixed use. And within the Horizons Plan, mixed use is described as places to work, live, and shop. So the OR district, which is office and multifamily, is considered part of that character. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and the future land use plan map. Staff recommends approval, and then at the March 15 PNZ meeting, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Smiley?
What are the requirements for sidewalks on the, on thoroughfares in and around this?
Sidewalks are considered, are required on thoroughfares. However, this is not a thoroughfare, so a sidewalk would not be required.
Any other questions?
But that runs with the roadway, not with the zoning, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Anderson, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant to speak in favor of this request. We agree with staff that the proposed request is in conformance with the land use plan. Specifically, the office residential zoning that is being requested creates the mixed-use pattern by providing an opportunity for a place to live in close proximity to places to work, shop, dine, receive medical care, and other services, all in a walkable pattern. A lot of times I get up here and I get to talk about traffic and concerns with traffic. So this case, I'd like to point out in the staff report, the agenda packet which states that the existing zoning can generate 6,181 daily trips, and that the requested zoning can generate approximately 439 trips, which is a net decrease of 5,742 trips per day, which is over a 90% reduction in traffic. So not only by changing the zoning pattern do you get that decrease, but also by having a place where people can walk to all the goods and services that are needed, and access to public transportation, which there's a bus stop right at this property. So all those things will have a cumulative effect in helping to reduce traffic in the thoroughfares around that property. Again, the request is consistent with the land use plan. Staff recommends approval. Planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve, so we appreciate your support of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Councilmember Smiley?
You know, you and your client brought up walkability, and so, and I've, people have talked, I have had some citizen feedback on this, they didn't come tonight, and, you know, they think it's a neat idea what you're doing there, but they, they focused on the walkability aspect, too.
Sure.
So any infrastructure that would support people actually walking to the surrounding things is probably, you know, that's the feedback I'm getting. They like the idea, they'd like to make sure that you guys are serious about that, and that it's reflected in what you build.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'd love to tell you that, you know, we're going to go out, and we're going to build sidewalks through our property, and the attorney's going to tell you, you know, that I can't give you any promises on improvements that we'll make in the area. But, but we agree. We think sidewalks in this area are highly needed. You know, I think this is a place where Arlington Boulevard in the past, recent years extended sidewalk down, and this would be an opportunity for the city to really evaluate and to look at in the future places where sidewalks are needed, and we would love to see that occur and support that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right, seen none. Close the public hearing, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item number six is an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 805 Vanderbilt Lane, which is known as Tax Parcel 22884. Les Everett with the Department of Planning and Development Services has the presentation. Mr. Everett?
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
We're going to start off here with the tax parcel information and location on a map of the locate, of the, location, 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 okay. Let's go to the aerial view to give you a better idea of the location of the property. All right, 805 Vanderbilt Lane was involved in a structural fire approximately two years ago. No utilities have been active since, and just so you are aware, enforcement actions were delayed due to title slash ownership and issues that we noticed along the way. So now we bring this to you, and we share with you that the building value is $165. The land tax value is $4,950, with a total property tax of $5,115. You'll notice the estimate to repair is a little over $90,000, and in essence, that is to rebuild to the minimum, given the extensive damage that you're about to see. Estimated demolition cost is $6,500. So I'll share with you a few of the pictures. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 805 Vanderbilt, and staff will be ready to begin after following the 90-day waiting period, as outlined in the ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Everett? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff. I have received many complaints about that house, and I know that the neighborhood will appreciate the demolition of that home, and I know that the Habitat for Humanity will appreciate that as well, since they have very well invested in that section of Vanderbilt. All right, Madam Manager, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a resolution to close a 20-foot alley north of Dickinson Avenue, west of Moy Boulevard, and adjoining the Southern Right of Way of the C. and adjoining the Southern Right-of-Way of the CLNA Railroad. City engineer Lisa Kirby has the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening.
This is a private alley adjacent to the railroad near the intersection of Dickinson Avenue and Moye Boulevard. It was utilized to transport oil for multiple oil companies in the area. The approximate location of the alley is identified on the aerial photo by the red box. Closure of this alley is being requested by the adjoining property owner, Carowan Oil Company. The street closure map shown here has been reviewed by city staff and Greenville Utilities Commission. GUC requests a 15-foot electrical easement parallel to the right-of-way of CLNA Railroad. It should be noted that the closure of this public accessway will not impact access to the adjacent property owners. PNZ voted unanimously to recommend closure of the 20-foot alley at their March 15, 2022 meeting, reserving the 15-foot GUC electrical easement parallel to the right-of-way of CLNA Railroad. Staff also recommends closure, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms.? Any questions for Ms. Kirby? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you very much. That was final public hearing. We'll move on to other items into business. Item number eight, Madam Manager.
Item eight is a resolution authorized in an application to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the 22 Historic Past Through Grant to perform a National Register Architectural Survey and District Nomination tentatively named East Fifth Street Historic District. Tony Parker, who serves as a planner for our Development Services Department, will have the presentation. He also serves as the staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Parker?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Pleasure to be here this evening.
Good evening.
This, we're going to, I'm going to present on Agenda Items Number Eight and Number Nine together to reduce redundancy. They're pretty much the same package. I'll just go through each piece separately. Greenville currently has the opportunity to continue archiving its history by applying for two 2022 Historic Past Through Grants. The grants originate with the National Park Service and are administered by the State Historic Preservation Office, otherwise known as SHIPPO. So the Historic Past Through Grant will assist in funding nominations for the National Register of Historic Places. Currently, Greenville has five historic districts. The new one, the first grant, will be for the proposed East Fifth Street District. If you look at this map here, you'll see the five districts we have now, two of which are residential districts, one being the Skinnerville-Greenville Heights Historic District, and the other one is the College View Historic District. The grant will be used to hire consultant to perform architectural survey and nomination for a National Register Historic District for the East Fifth Street area, and that's shown on this map here. It's approximately 60 acres and approximately about 170 properties. The period of significance for this grant is from 1910 to 1972. The property's got to be at least 50 years old to be considered for this registration. If it's not within the 50-year timeframe, there has to be some kind of historical significance to bring it into that. The grant will be used to survey these properties on East Fifth Street. It's important to understand that this is an honorary designation. It is not a local designation. The city nor the Historic Preservation Commission will have no purview on these properties. In other words, the owners of the properties can do whatever they would like with the properties. It's an honorary designation for the whole area. And I think that that's the important piece right there. It's not a local designation. This is an honorary national designation. Not all properties will be surveyed, will be included in the National Register. Listings of this can help build community pride and pride in their built environment. You can see that that's a college. That was East Carolina Teachers College back in 1915, looking towards what is now College View. And that empty field grew up through the last 100 years or so. Listing on the National Register does not mandate preservation of the property in the future. In other words, the property owners can sell it to another investor or buyer, and they do not have to maintain any kind of historical significance. They don't have to do any kind of preservation for the property. Again, it is an honorary designation and not a local designation. The benefits for the property owner is there's a 20% federal tax investment credit that they can use. North Carolina has two credits as well. The North Carolina credits always depend upon state budget. The total cost for this project is $25,000. Our grant request is $15,000. And our local matching funds, which is 40% of the grant, would have to be $10,000, and that is not budgeted currently. Our next steps is if you all approve this, staff will submit the grant by the April 22 deadline. The grant awards will be announced in June, and the completion of the project should be done by September 2023. Staff is requesting the authorized, that city council authorize a motion for submission of two applications to the 2022 Historic Preservation Grant. The other part of this is the College View Historic District. And you can see that what we'll be doing there is a lot of the properties will be re-surveyed that didn't make the cutoff last time. There's other properties around the area that would be surveyed as well. These would not be part of local designation. This would be part of the National Register, which College View is already. And therefore, these houses and properties that are surveyed will have no, no purview by the city. Historic Preservation Commission would have no purview. People can do with their property as they will. You can see this area here where the hash marks are is the current College Hill District. We'd like to survey the area that surrounds that. It's important also to understand that when East Carolina grew, so did that neighborhood and expanded that way. And the architectural significance, you can look at the area and see the smaller lots, go to the bigger lots. You can see a lot of different history of these. The cost for this project is $30,000, with the grant request to be $18,000. Local matching funds would be $12,040 of the grant. And again, those funds are not currently budgeted. And our deadline's the same as it was the first one, and I'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Councilmember Smiley?
So when was the, the current district, when were the, when was that survey done?
It was done in the 1990s, early 1990s.
So the houses that didn't qualify at the time are now 30 years older?
Yes, yes, and they could possibly qualify now.
Getting more historic all the time.
That's correct. And those houses now are considered non-contributing to the neighborhood, so they would be contributing.
And then, just to make sure I understand, if a house, if you're listed on the National Register, you're basically put on a list.
Right.
And if you, if you're on the list, you're eligible for tax credits and things like that. If you, the greatest penalty that you could suffer for doing anything would be that you'd be taken off the list, right? I mean, there's no requirement to stay on the list, and if you,
That's correct.
You know, put aluminum all over your house, or whatever the, whatever the rule, whatever the National Park Service thinks isn't correct, they could take you off the list, but there's no, there's nothing binding on action.
There's no downside to this. This helps improve property values. It really, it helps us keep the history of Greenville alive by recording who built these houses, who lived in these houses, what professors, counselors, et cetera, walked through those neighborhoods and streets, what students were there. It's really to help tell the story, to improve property values, and also to give these property owners the possibility of applying for tax credits.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Parker?
Move to approve both items.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Appreciate the, the quick presentations and combining both of those. We'll move on to item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is the Fiscal 22 Third Quarter General Fund Financial Update and a preview of the City of Greenville's FY 2223 Proposed Budget Director of Financial Services Byron Hayes has the presentation. Byron?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
We will have a brief presentation of the proposed budget draft of 2023 and a brief presentation of the 2022 third quarter financial update. Just to remind council and everyone watching, the city's mission statement to provide citizens with high-quality services. And for the 2023 budget goals this year, we have six budget goals. Be a high-performing city, create a great workforce, a strong community, a safe community, build sound infrastructure, and provide a vibrant place to live, work, and play. And the current budget, or the future budget, will maintain council direction on our progress, or, yes, progress of capital projects such as Wildwood, Epsom, and Community Pool, and emphasis on the pavement management program, continuing our stormwater utility plan that was approved in 2019, investment in city staff, an emphasis in traffic services initiatives, a commitment to support economic development in the community, and a commitment to arts, entertainment, and special events. In terms of budget highlights, the budget will maintain the current tax rate at 48.95 cents. Will provide $4 million for both the pavement, or for the pavement management program as well as other infrastructure improvements, providing a 4% merit of market increase for employees, as well as $1 million in the compensation study based on market data. It includes funding for six additional fire rescue positions, three of which will be for Station 7 staffing, and three will be reclassifications for the tiller truck operation, as well as six new positions for increased infrastructure maintenance throughout the city. And as I mentioned earlier, it does continue the stormwater plan, the second year of that stormwater plan that was approved in 2019. The budget will be $95.16 million, and as you can see, it's balanced revenues and expenses. And in terms of revenues, $75 million of the $95 million is made up of property sales and utilities taxes. That's the largest share. Just a breakdown of how that comes out, about 82% is made up of those property, sales tax, utilities, franchise tax, and the GUC transfer. Comparing the budget to the current budget, it's about a 6% increase. And look at property taxes. As you guys can see, there has been a steady decline over the past 20 years in our property tax rate. It's currently the lowest that it's been in those 20 years at 48.95 cents.
Hey, can you go back one more slide?
Yes. One more.
One more. Okay, thank you.
And as I was saying, even with the property tax consistently decreasing, we do see a rise in property tax revenues. Property tax revenues have risen at an average growth rate over the past three years of about 3.5%. And we currently have just under 3% for a growth rate in 2023. Additionally, sales tax has also increased during that time, much more significantly than property tax. The three-year average has been just under 10%. However, we are keeping that property, or the sales tax rate flat for the current year, just as a conservative measure due to the level of volatility that's taking place. In terms of expenses, still $95.16 million for the general fund expenses. About 63% of that is made up of personnel. And comparing the expense budget to last year's budget as well, a 6% increase. I'll give you all a second to take a look at that as well. Moving on to the personnel expenses within the general fund. The general fund expenses for personnel do include a 4% employee wage increase, $1 million for those potential salary increases that would be derived from the compensation study, as well as 1.2 increase in the employer share of the retirement contribution for employees. And the budget does include a 4% vacancy rate for personnel. It also includes those three new fire rescue officers for Station 7 and three captain reclassifications for that tiller truck operation, as well as an additional police officer rank in the police department of a master police officer, and the six new positions for the increased infrastructure maintenance needs throughout the city. Breaking down the personnel expenses, 68% of those expenses are salary and 32% of benefits. And taking a look at operating and our capital expenses, about $22 million of the general fund budget is operating expenses. As you can see, it's pretty evenly distributed with our largest categories being contracted services and our fleet charges. Breaking down our capital expense, it's about $1.5 million, about 1.6% of the overall budget. The majority of this is made up of our larger vehicles that are paid for out of the vehicle replacement fund, the vehicles that cost over $35,000. Taking a look at transfers, the city is proposing $13.7 million worth of transfers in the current, in the new fiscal year. And in summary, this budget does continue an investment in our capital, operations, and personnel of the city and does maintain the current tax rate at 48.95 cents. And next steps, we will have a proposed budget presentation on April 25, public hearing May 12, and the budget adoption on May 23. Do want to remind the council that the results of the market wage study will not be ready by the time that the budget is approved by you all. But this, the study should, we should have those results in the fall of 2020, excuse me, the fall of 2022.
23 or 20?
23. 20, 22, 22.
The slide says 23.
Yeah, sorry about that. The fall of 2022, fiscal year 2023. So before we move on to the third quarter update, does anyone have any questions?
What was the calculation for, what was the rental rate in the, for funding the vehicle, vehicle replacement fund?
It's at, it's at 50% for vehicles over $35,000 this year, and 100% for any vehicles under $35,000. All right, so we will move on to the third quarter financial update for the current fiscal year. Just a brief explanation of the assumptions that we use for the projections for the current fiscal year. Those projections are based on the previous five years of revenue and expense data. There is consideration given for any changes in service and spending due to COVID-19, as well as, we did try and remove any large outline data from one-time spending in order to maintain consistency in that, in the budget projections. There is no nonessential spending after May 15 due to our purchasing cutoff, so that is also factored into those projections as well. And we do continue to make 100% of our budgeted transfers each year, so that is also factored in. The summary of this is the revenues came in at about $93.5 million. Expenses came in at right around 90, so that's a net of roughly $3.5 million revenues over expenses. In terms of revenue, as you can see, about, revenues ended up about, are projected to be about $300,000 more than the revised budget for the current fiscal year. The majority of the large increase ends up being in sales tax. We do see some of the main factors of that sales tax increase for the current fiscal year is due to the shift in spending behavior of the community, as well as increased costs and the fact that the effects of COVID for the organization were less than we originally anticipated. Additionally, we also did see a large increase in the amount of revenue we brought in for the rescue transport service. This is due to the increase billing volume that we will, that we currently see and will see in the future. However, all the revenues were not all great. We did see a pretty, a pretty significant decrease in our investment earnings for the current fiscal year, which is due to the lower interest rates, as well as just a negative market performance that we currently have. And then breaking that down, the $93.5 million, the two largest sections are property tax and our sales tax, which make up about 69% of our total revenues. And then looking at expenses, expenses ended up being about, or are projected to be about $3 million less than our revised budget. Some of the areas that we see that play into that $3 million under-budget number is our police department at about $2 million under budget, which is mainly due to staffing shortages, which cause decreased personnel calls. Our recreation and parks department, which has, Our recreation and parks department, which had several changes in programming at the beginning of the year due to COVID-19, which did reduce expenses in addition to those changes in the programming. And also, in our information technology department, there were significant supply chain issues that we saw during the year, which delayed the delivery of our computer hardware. But staff will continue to monitor each department budget to ensure that no department goes over at the end of the year. And then breaking that down, about 47% of our total $90 million projected budget is in public safety. So in summary, $93.5 million in revenue projected and $90 million of expenses projected for a net of $3.5 million. Factoring in next year's fund balance appropriation of $150,000, as well as our anticipated encumbrance carryover of about $1.75 million, that leaves us with about $1.5 million. And our current year capital needs, we have about $1.2 million in current year capital needs. These are things that, as you recall, were originally in our capital improvement plan. However, we did know that, or we did anticipate being able to fund some of those projects in the current fiscal year. And so we are providing that list here for you tonight with the anticipation that we will submit these, this list of projects for appropriation in a May budget amendment. And just some other factors to consider for quarter four and the end of the year, obviously there are inflationary concerns for the cost and goods of services for the city. We are continuing to monitor the price of fuel. Fuel's been very volatile recently, and so while we're anticipating that to go down some in the future, we are still monitoring that in order to make sure that we still come in under budget with, with the rest of our departments. Additionally, we do have changes in the year in receivables. An increased sales tax number does end up with a larger receivable at the end of the year, so we are factoring that in when we're considering our projection and our end-to-end performance. However, a decreased rescue receivable does happen with the timing of our billing coming in. And then, as always, as I mentioned before, any supply chain issues that we have and that we've seen currently in this year are resulting in increased encumbrances, which is why our encumbrance number has gone up a little bit that we're anticipating for the end of the year. Any questions about the financial update?
Councilmember Smiley?
So with the substantial underruns in, on the personnel side, is 4% vacancy, the 4% vacancy rate for next year's budget, is that the right number? I mean, should that number be, you know, higher and, you know, maybe have, you know, if you're especially, if you're expecting, you know, potentially overruns or inflationary increases in fuel or something like that, you know, would it be better to budget that money into, I don't know, you know, additional road expenditures or fleet or something like that? If, if you're seeing, you know, $2 million is a big number on a 50, $60 million payroll number, so...
Councilmember Smiley, at this point, 4% is what we have historically always done for the budget. While in some places we are running ahead of that with some vacancies, there are some other departments where we are not. We are also getting ready, would anticipate both a range adjustment as well as changes in compensation due to the pay plan study that's underway. And, and we don't really know what the future holds, and so our belief is that 4% is the right number to start the budget with. If we do, we'll continue to always monitor the budget through the fiscal year, and at the point at which we believe that there's additional money to allocate, we could bring it back to you all, or the council, to allocate in other capital projects, which is what typically what our project, what our process has been.
That's fine. I mean, I would defer to staff on this, except, and I know that the 4% number is an arbitrary number. It got made up, and I know because I made it up. You know, six or seven, you know, several years ago, we were allocating 100% of the budget, I mean, of salaries, and so we, well, we should put a vacancy number in there, and we made up a 4% number. At some point, you know, custom and usage is fine, but that really should be based on data, right? You should, it should be driven by, you know, this is what it's been for the last three or four years, or five years, or whatever the right number is, but especially if we're seeing, you know, $2 million of $60 million payroll is 4%, some of that. So anyway, that's just my only concern. I think it's, there's nothing, I don't mind, I don't mind that we're doing stuff because we've always done it that way to some extent, except that in this particular case, we really didn't have a good reason to do it to begin with. It was, you know, it was a political compromise on council rather than a calculation by a financial professional.
Right, and I, I think from our staff, we've actually had some interesting discussion about what that vacancy rate would be, what we should do with the budget, and we believe that, or, we want to create a budget that we can adhere to, and we, while there, we are in incredibly unusual times, we don't know what the future holds, and we believe that a 4% rate best serves us. We'll, again, we'll continue to monitor it, and we're happy to come back to the council with updates, and if there, it looks like there's additional dollars to reallocate to capital projects, we'll bring it back to you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Thank you for the very quick presentation. We look forward to seeing you again on the 25th.
I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
All right.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
All right, we'll move on to comments by the mayor and the city council. Let's start this way. How about Councilmember Daniels?
Oh, first, okay.
Threw you off, didn't I? If you like, I can come back.
No, 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 I'm fine. A couple of things. First, I would like to thank Chief Holtzman and Detective Robert Sines on the teen dating program that they did last night. It was very informative. I hope it was recorded. I'm not sure if it was. I think that is something that's very important for parents and everyone that should know. Detective Sines did an excellent job, and I truly appreciate that. Also, Saturday, we are having a spring egg scravaganza with Recreation and Parks. Let me see, that will be held in Greenville Terrace from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The rain date is April the 23rd. And last night, I got to dance at the Joy Soup Kitchen with the Steppers.
I hope that was recorded, too.
No, that wasn't recorded. It was a lot of fun. It was the New Look Steppers. I'm telling you, Joy Soup Kitchen is doing a lot of wonderful things in our community at this time. And also, the ECU Smile Squad Honor Society was there. They are a new service-oriented student organization that consists of pre-dental students on ECU's campus, and they did a wonderful job teaching children about teeth, um, teeth health. Is that them? And also, they provided the students with toothbrushes and things like that to brush their teeth. And last but not least, we have started Zumba in the Park again. So everybody, come on out, get your Zumba on, and let's have some fun. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
I don't have much. I would just like to say, we are a month away from municipal elections, and there will be some new faces inevitably from that election. We've got a couple of council members up here that are not seeking reelection, and so I'd just like to, you know, while we have time, express my appreciation for everybody up here. I feel like we've all done a great job of being able to work together at a time in, you know, the world and nation where things have been, you know, extremely politically divisive. I've really appreciated the team effort that we've all had, so thank you all.
I think there's a couple of people that are vying for a really strong write-in campaign. What if you guys won with a write-in campaign?
If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve, I think is what he's saying.
Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm all set, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Well, I guess I did all my comments on Monday night, so everybody have a safe weekend. It is budget time, so there are lots of things. We did discuss, I know that we'll have a joint GUC meeting coming up.
25th?
On the 25th with the city council. And I was just surprised that, that they're having problems hiring people with CDL license. And, and so Ms. Wall and I were at the Greenville Shelter yesterday, and we did talk about to the shelter people that they need to contact Ernest Lee at Pitt Community College because he has a CDL program, so we can get people going. And also, for employees who like to get their CDL, also, that program is available to them as well. So I would advise anyone, if you want to have your CDL so you can get, you know, get another job or a better job, whichever you see it, please contact Mr. Ernest Lee at Pitt Community College. There's a lot of programs going on out there, and he will be glad to talk to you about all of those programs. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I've got a special one tonight about, well, exactly six years ago today, I was sitting where Councilmember Daniels is sitting right now, and I got a text message from my wife to let me know that her waterhead just broke. And I told Councilmember Smiley, I was like, hey, I gotta leave in a second, and he went in full panic mode, "You gotta go, you gotta go, you gotta go," over and over. And I was like, it's okay, this is our second child, the baby's not coming right away, it'll take a little bit of time. And sure enough, I excused myself from the meeting, I got up and I left, and I went over to the hospital, and several hours later, in a suit, I was holding my newborn daughter. And today, Caroline, my youngest, turned six years old, so I wanted to wish her a happy birthday today. She's super excited and had a great birthday party last weekend out at Stokes Farm. Anytime you can go out there and let them play with a bunch of farm animals, it's always a good time, so...
You are a counselor.
Yep, and here I am at city council, and she's waiting for me to stop talking so I can come back and celebrate with her. So I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter. I hope everybody has a great Easter weekend, be able to celebrate with your friends and family, and be able to get a little bit of time off. I know the city's closed tomorrow, so hopefully all of our city employees will be able to get a little bit of rest and relaxation and get back to work on Monday. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney McGirt to take us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mayor and Council have a rather lengthy closed session motion, so I ask for your patience. I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating, relating to the following lawsuits entitled Eric Stephen Farrington, Craig D. Mamrose, plaintiffs versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education, defendants; Mary Sue Vitavas, plaintiff versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education; Phil Berger, in his capacity as president pro tempore of the Senate; and Tim Moore, in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives, defendants. Third lawsuit, Chase Jean Matthews, Jackie Olson; Alexander Pascal, Tiffany Shaw; Mark Owens Jr., Barbara Owens; Matthew Allen and Jessica Louvender, individually and on behalf of all other similarly situated plaintiffs versus City of Greenville; Phil Berger, in his capacity as president pro tempore of the Senate; and Tim Moore, in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives, and defendants. Last case, Sean Rambert Sr., co-administrator of the estate of Sean Michael Rambert Jr., and Danielle Cox Rambert, co-administrator of the estate of Sean Michael Rambert Jr., plaintiffs versus City of Greenville; and David Brandon Johnson, in his individual and official capacities, defendants. That is the suggested motion.
We need to go into closed session.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are officially in closed session.